All right, everybody. We're going to call the meeting on order at 6:04.
Good evening, Greenwood Lake Board of Education and Greenwood Lake community.
Matt Buckley.
Here.
Michelle Kaiser is not present tonight, Mike Kentsworth and Heidi Felsky will also not be here. Erin Nullback.
Here.
Susan Salsar.
Here.
Jonathan Third.
Here.
Thank you.
Exit to our left, right and behind us for emergency purposes. And review and approve Board of Gentlemen. I get a motion that after we view the Board of Education approves the agenda as presented and/or amended at this meeting. Motion placed. Aaron, second, Jonathan. Any discussion? Call in favor. I oppose. Motion carries. Accept the minutes of March 14th, 2022 Business Meeting. I get a motion to accept the minutes of March 14th, 2022 Business Meeting. Sue, down. Any discussion? Call in favor. I oppose. Motion carries. 4-0. Accept the minutes of March 25th, 2022 Special Business Meeting. I get a motion to accept the minutes for March 25th, 2022 Special Business Meeting. Motion placed. Aaron, second, Sue. Any discussion? Call in favor. I oppose. Motion carries. State this presentation. Matt.
Good evening, Greenwood Lake Board of Education and Greenwood Lake community. Superintendent's report this month, as anyone that's been watching over the past few years knows, I give a monthly COVID update. We have seven current cases in the district, that's 1.16% of our population. Historically, this year, we've had 165 cases, which is 27% of our population, which are just under, I'm sorry, just over one-fourth of our population has been diagnosed with COVID this year. The counting rate, according to the CDC, which only evaluates PCR tests, not rapid tests, we are at a median, which is 6.37%, and the New York State Department of Health positivity average, which does take into account rapids, had a yesterday average of 7.1% and a seven-day average of 5.3%. During the summer of 2022, we are bringing back all of our academic programs, so to speak very briefly on that, I bring up Director of Curriculum Instruction Lena Polczynski.
Good evening, Board members. Good evening, Superintendent Haddon. I am very pleased to announce that we are bringing back our summer academic programs this year. We have our Summer Skills Builder, our Bridging to Kindergarten program, our Jump Start Summer Enrichment program, and our Kick Off to Kindergarten. Just briefly, just reminding you about those programs. The Summer Skills Builder program is open to our uprising first through eighth grade students who have been identified by teachers and staff. The Bridging to Kindergarten is our students that are coming into kindergarten also identified through the kindergarten screening. And our Jump Start Enrichment program is our non-mandatory special education enrichment program for grades two through seven. And our Kick Off to Kindergarten is what we invite all of our incoming kindergarteners to have an experience of a kindergarten day. With three programs running simultaneously and with our current administrative staff running our summer PDs, committees, and preparing for the upcoming school year, we are looking to create a summer program administrative overseer position. This individual would oversee the programs, would determine the effectiveness of the program, look at the data from how the students started and how the students ended at the end of the program, as well as be the communication to parents and staff members. Again, there would always be an administrator overseeing that individual as well, but this is something that we would like to implement for this year, and we would be using grant money to support that. Does anyone have any questions for me? Okay, well, I would like to just thank the Board of Ed, Superintendent Haddon, for your constant support in our summer programs. Thank you.
Thank you. I announced today, the GLTA, along with the Laker Kids Club, raised over $3,000 for the local Backpack Snack Attack program. The Backpack Snack Attack program provides food for weekends and evenings to a good portion of our students, and to make it a weekly bag of food to take home with them on Fridays. Great job to the GLTA and the Laker Kids for raising those funds. I'm now going to introduce Kathy Crozier, who is a kindergarten teacher at our elementary school. She has developed a passion for therapy animals, specifically dogs. Her Cause to Read program has been incredibly successful, so successful that there are so many students joining that she has to break them down into very small groups that only come a few weeks at a time. So she is looking to expand that program a little bit and maybe do some items during the school day, so I invited her here tonight to speak to you, and it looks like she has a special guest, and I'm sure that she will introduce the special guest as well. So Kathy, please join us at the podium, and I have her slides ready.
Well, you basically said everything. Good evening, thank you. This, I just have to introduce them first. This is Branson, and this is his handler, Ernie, who is cohandler with him, with his wife Polly, who they volunteer for my Cause to Read club, which I have completed for the school year, but I met them a couple of years ago, pre-COVID, and honestly, through all the years I've been doing this, it all started back in Explorations, back in 2017. Little did I know that having a therapy dog come to, you know, an exploration for a half-hour, two-hour, an hour or so, would turn into this. So it went from Explorations to I started a club back in 2018, and it took a lot of work finding the volunteers, but I tried every resource, online libraries, you name it, I found them, and it just took off. And I had to unfortunately turn a lot of kids away because of the timeframe of the club, it's only roughly 40 minutes, 45 minutes. We don't have time to have a lot of kids read, so I'm just anxious to try to spread on, give more time to that. So now that my club is finished, and I have about seven volunteers this year for my club, some come every week, like Branson, some came once a week, once a month, but they all, like I said, provide just a wonderful short time in our day to the kids. The kids just adore them. They are anxious, anxious to read to them. They just show a love to read now. Some are reading below grade level, some are reading way above grade level. I didn't pick them based on their grade level, I just picked them because they wanted to be in my club, and the kids are just loving it. And this year with COVID, I'd say some kids definitely needed just that time to touch a dog and relax and pet a dog, and that's okay, but then there's dogs like, "I'll reach another one, I'll reach another one," and as a teacher, that we just want to hear that. So now that my club is over, I would love to ask your consideration to let the kids, let the therapy dogs come into my school, excuse my school, the elementary school. It is my school, I've been there a while. Anyway, and push into the classrooms. So obviously, there's a lot of benefits, as you can see, I made a couple of slides. That is, those are two other volunteers, the one on the right is Junior, he's a courtie, and the one on the left is Tyler, he's a grade parente. So I did learn through all this that therapy dogs come in all shapes and sizes, but there is a lot of benefits, that's on another slide, but I would like to, thank you. And there's Branson, that's Branson, I believe, who's a first grader. I would like to let them come into the school day, so that way we can open it up to more kids that were unable to come to the club or do Explorations a couple of years ago. I would let teachers sign up, a letter will be sent home notifying the parents that there will be therapy dogs in the school. Obviously, some children have been exposed to them through the club. When they leave at 8:40, and the kids are walking in, some kids are like, "Oh, my dog is here," you know, they all get their pets and stuff, and they love it. Or after school, when they're leaving for the bus, night afternoon volunteers were coming, and they would get all excited to see the dog. So anyway, we go back to the letter sent home to parents, notifying them that the therapy dogs would come in during the school day. Teachers have a choice, it's not a, you know, I'm not forcing any teacher to put them into the classrooms, totally optional, and then students would then have an opportunity. We probably do about half-hour blocks in a classroom, so volunteers are coming for about two hours, so maybe a half-hour block, so they would be able to reach more classrooms during their visit, but they would come back each week. And just a background on this, they have to go through training, classes, kind of like obedience, but they have to learn how to react to sounds, noises, loud groups, that could be seen in a school, that could be seen in a hospital or nursing home and so forth, and then get become certified, they have to pass a test. These people, including Ernie and Branson, volunteer their time, they don't have to do this, but they choose to do it, and they are also insured by the bright and beautiful organization, Therapy Dogs. So I, now that I've been doing this since 2017 with Explorations and Club, have now gone through the classes and the training, and my own dog, and I should say, became a certified therapy team in February. So if you told me that back in 2017, "Oh, you're going to have a therapy dog," yeah, I didn't, never would have thought that, but after observing what they do in the club, it's just, I can't, I just get more buzzed in all the time, and it just is rewarding to see it. So it's now a passion of mine that I want to go out and do that with my dog. So I'd just like you to consider that.
Sounds like your retirement plan is in place, that eventually, no, I know, when you're ready, we're not going to let you, we're just going to have you come back with the club.
Well, that's my thing, because when we were my principal, I told you that, it all started back then, I said, "I want to," you know, so I am hoping to, yes, push back, push in here when I am retired, but I'm not retired yet, don't push me out the door yet.
Absolutely not, never. So just a few questions that I know are probably in the board members' minds, and then I'll open up your questions, and I'd like to invite Ernie to speak as well, is that we do already have a policy in place that would allow for this. We have contacted the insurance company to make sure that during the school day, we have already, we had already contacted them about after school, but that during the school day, and they said, "Yes, that's covered as long as the dogs and the owners are registered," which they are, and certified. And then I'm sure you also have a question on, you know, what if a child is allergic or if a child is scared? So if a child is allergic, we would certainly not bring a dog into that classroom. Right? We would probably like to be able to provide it to other students in that classroom, maybe bringing them out to the dog instead of the dog into the classroom, that would be an accommodation. And in terms of fear, I think that this would be a wonderful opportunity if families were open to overcoming fear, to interrupt the dog that is trained and very calm, and obviously not forcing, but it could be another learning opportunity for students if there's intense fear. So I just want to open up to Ernie first, if there's anything you'd like to say.
Don't get me started.
I know you've been a loyal friend to Kathy and to our school.
Oh, also, we were talking on our way in here, and they had said something, oh, did you mention that the volunteers are educators? He happens to be a former educator, as well as his wife are former educators, but they're, not all my volunteers are educators, but it doesn't matter, you know, they're just, they're people that love to work with children, that love to work with their dogs, and they see the wonderful, you know, you get rewarded every time you see a child read with them. It really, I just, I would invite you, if you could come, when they are pushing it, to come watch them, because it's really, it's just uplifting.
There's a certain magic that happens when the children are interacting with the dog. We could tell stories. The child that we didn't know was diagnosed with acute hyperactivity disorder, because the child was perfectly normal seeming in the presence of the dog. The dog helped the child focus, and the teacher said that carried over for the rest of the day. The child who was mute in school would speak to the dog and was explaining what was going on in the story, and the teachers were astounded. The dog was so safe that that child began talking in school. So, and there are many, many of those kinds of stories that we're pleased to have witnessed.
Very cool. What a neat experience. So Board members, I open up to you, if you have any questions or comments or thoughts on adding this into our during the day program potentially.
Personally, I'm in full support of it. Absolutely. Everybody else?
Do you happen to have any high-level gender-wise volunteers?
Yes, some of them are, and in my letter to the parents prior to them pushing it during the school day, it would, you know, give them, "Please contact us and let us know if your child has a fear or an allergy." Lesson Nurse Amber obviously has a list of allergies, but I believe there's only one in the school that I know of, when I was arranging my club this year. So, yes, so, yeah, some of them are, but as a recent certified therapy team with my dog, there is guidelines that we have to follow to do a visit, you know, you have to be clean there, you know, there's definitely guidelines we have to follow.
Oh, I know, I was just wondering if you had any.
Yes.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I think it's a great idea, and congratulations to Mrs. Crozier and Shannon, you said a dog, same with Shay?
Yeah.
Are becoming certified, that's a good thing.
Thank you, thank you. No, it was, like I said, I never would have thought it would happen, but honestly, I have to thank all Explorations for.
Well, and it's been wonderful to see you on this journey and on this path, from your initial idea during Explorations, just to see, and then just having it work and wanting to do the next thing and the next thing, and the constant conversations, you coming, every time you see me coming down the hall, I was like, "Now I want to do this, now I want to do this." It's been wonderful to see, and I very much enjoy watching you. Thank you very much, and we look forward to.
I just hope you keep it in the school and not go into retirement personally.
Well, thank you, but I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our elementary cafeteria.
I'm just passing out the designs, but we are getting very close to a final, to a final design in our cafeteria. This is the most recent iteration that reflects the notes that we had, we really wanted to reflect the community of Greenwood Lake in the cafeteria, and at the new elementary school. So you will see that it reflects the woods, animals, and a lake and mountains, et cetera. We did have some final notes that we sent back today that we're hoping to see in the final, final version of it, but we're very excited about this. The colors seem right, the theme seems right, and it's been a year in the making of going back and forth on the design for this space. So we're excited, and I wanted to share with the board. So just, you have a copy in front of you to see it up close, but when you go into the cafeteria from the middle of the school to the right, this is the wall with the windows, there are going to be three booths with students seating in them, and there will be two wooded areas, some boats and some other shadow words and scenes, and then up top on the pavement on the side of the soffit, we're going to have some mountain scenes. Then as you walk into the left is a very large, long wall, and we went back and forth with a lot of different thoughts and ideas on this one. Ended up settling on a large stain in the middle with some supporting on the sides. We went with the lake, people hiking, little cabin next to the lakefront, so that's the large wall to the left. Then as you come in, this is the door you come in from the middle of the school, there will be a bathroom right here, that's something that both the students and the staff have been asking for for years, is a bathroom in the cafeteria. Right now, students have to go upstairs to another level of the building or go to the restroom while they're eating. So there will be a restroom down here now, as well as a water fountain, there will also be a custodial closet built. Right now, the custodial items are kind of in a corner, out for everyone to see, and so that will now be able to be completed. In addition, the pipes that you can see from the ceiling will now be all encased in boxes. There is another booth over here to the side with a sign that says, "Life is better at the lake," and that's something we all know very well. And then at the far side will be a new serving line, very similar to the middle school here, it will have a roll-down rack. We have a dock theme with a student fishing off the dock, some buoys, and a little bit of lake water there built in at the bottom. So this is the closest we have, and then the next design should be our final. So I'm just hoping to offer the board any opportunity to share thoughts.
My question is, I don't remember where we landed and all that, but are we keeping the booths or are we going up to tables?
So we're keeping the booths, and then the tables will be around tables.
Okay.
So that's where we.
I saw, I just saw, wait one.
There was an option where we eliminated the booths, and then due to the seating capacity, we also decided to keep the booths and around people so that they have greater capacity and increase our grade level numbers to back up.
Okay.
Can you use that John and his family office?
That was actually, one of our pieces of feedback was to try and get some other boat shadows, so we asked for a sailboat and a kayak in addition to a canoe on that one wall here. So that's where we are, and we're very excited, and Kent Wayne, I know Diane Connolly shared it with her staff today, and they're excited, and when they heard there was going to be a bathroom, I think there were actual cheers. Cheers, so very exciting. Switching gears again, Backpack Club, which is a service provider of before and after school care as well as summer care for the children of Greenwood Lake, announced this week that it would be closing effective June 24th. I know that has raised a lot of concerns from parents, and we've actually heard from several parents already. I want to start by saying that we wish Donna and her staff the best of luck, we've had a very strong partnership with them, a strong partnership with them over the years, they bring their students, their children that they have over to us every morning at the elementary school, and they come and pick them up every day and walk them back to the Backpack Club. So that's been an ongoing relationship for years, and we certainly will miss them and wish them all the best. Parents, as I said, have been reaching out to us, and I spoke briefly with the board this week at our budget workshop about this. It will be no cost to the district, however, not however, it will be no cost to the district. We will be reaching out to the YMCA to see if they would be willing to start a Club Kid for our elementary-age students during the school year. Club Kid operates before school, after school, and oftentimes will also offer support on half-days of school for the full afternoon, et cetera, for students. Families can drop off at the elementary school, usually starts at 7:00 a.m. and goes until about 6:00 p.m. Parents pay the YMCA directly for that, it's a separate organization, they just operate within the school building. So it allows for a seamless transition from the before and after-school care to and from school. They operate in almost every other school district in the county already, so I know that it has been very successful, and parents appreciate having that opportunity right in the buildings. So I'm going to be preparing a letter that will go out to our families tomorrow, stating that we'll be exploring this and working on getting this set up for our district, and doing so in as quickly a manner as possible so that our parents can plan for the fall.
Where will it take place?
So we are certain that we can get it at the elementary school. We are also, I actually pre-wrote the letter this afternoon, we are also looking to support our fourth and fifth graders in a certain way. We don't know if that would take place at our building, or if we would transfer them to the elementary school somehow, or YMCA could help transfer them to the elementary school. I've already spoken with Mr. Kamar and Mrs. Connolly about this as well, to talk about potential spaces, or if the fourth and fifth graders went down there before the end of the elementary school day, what that might look like. So those are some logistics that we have to look out, look at. I feel very confident that we can do it for K through three, and I am pretty confident we'll be able to figure out something for our four or five students as well. I just don't know their location for the four or five students as of right now. I thought it would depend on numbers and amount of interest.
A long time ago when we had the program, it was in the cafeteria, a very long time ago. I'm guessing it would be back to the cafeteria again?
We definitely look at, for this type of program, we definitely look at your larger spaces. So at the elementary school, you look at the gymnasium, you look at the cafeteria. Up here, you look at the cafeteria, you look at the multi-purpose, you look at the gymnasium. Now, up here, you have activities, so you have the fall drama here, you have the spring music, so this space tends to be used, the gymnasium tends to be used for sports, so we're looking more probably at the multi-purpose room. But again, that's going to be a conversation with Club Kid to show them our spaces, walk-in spaces, and also how many parents are going to participate in this. Is it five kids or is it 50 kids? And that makes a difference on the space we provide as well.
Do they have a minimum in order to come?
I have no idea, this was just announced this week, and so we have not reached out to them yet.
If I remember going back about five or six years, this was something that was discussed briefly with the Board then, and I think there had to be a minimum of participation.
I would imagine that the minimum participation would go by the size of the school district, because I know that they operate in Florida and Highland Falls, Oklahoma, and Chester, which are smaller districts like ours, as well as in larger districts.
I just remember, it wasn't a large number, but there was a number. It'll be interesting to see, I think it'll benefit families.
I'd also like to thank Donna for her use of service for running Backpack Club, since we sorely missed the buy-her-down.
All right, again, changing topics, we have the Board trustee elections, there are three individuals running for two seats on the board. The three individuals that are running and in the order on the ballot are Susan Salsar, Michelle Kaiser, and David Clifford. Michelle Kaiser and Susan Salsar being the two in office. Looking ahead in the next month, between now and the next board meeting, we are gearing up, it is spring, and we are busy. So next week, on April 26th, we have kindergarten orientation. On April 27th and 28th, we have the math state assessments. On May 10th, we will have the public hearing on the school budget for '22, '23, as well as the proposed capital project overview. We will be doing, I'll talk about it again later, but we will be doing that in person, however, we will be recording that and posting that to our YouTube channel, our social media, and sending it out via school messenger so people can watch that. The eighth-grade Washington DC trip will be May 11th through the 13th. Fourth and fifth grade open house will be on May 12th. On May 17th, we have our annual vote and budget vote and election, as well as our kindergarten through third grade open house. And that's the month of April and May to the next meeting, so, because we will have a meeting on May 17th, the day of the election. Principal reports. Ms. Connolly.
Good evening, everyone. Sarah, flip to your next screen, we do have some photos for you tonight. Our One Book One School reading of the world according to Humphrey concluded with a whole school dressed like Humphrey Day. This month-long program brought families together to read for sheer pleasure, and we hope the fun that our students had will inspire this reading habit to continue. You'll be happy to know that our school pet Humphrey that is shown there with Mr. Smiggle, he has found a permanent home in our guidance counselor's office, Miss Dan Curran, and the students can visit, you know, here and there, different times during the day, as they wish, but he is quite the hit, not going.
I've heard much disappointment that the night cam has been turned off, so we might have to bring that off for one night.
Yeah, myself, and the number of hits on that thing was amazing, how many people were watching that, and I could find myself leaning in too. So, yeah, we might have to find a more permanent way of getting that set, but that was a lot of fun. Next picture slideshow shows April is National Poetry Month. At the elementary school, students have been engaged in both reading and writing many different kinds of poetry in order to learn more about this expressive way of communicating thoughts and feelings. This week is our Keep a Poem in Your Pocket event, and students have chosen or written a poem that they keep with them throughout the day. You'll see that hanging, the little pocket hanging around Dylan's neck there on the left. You'll see that hanging, the little pocket hanging around Dylan's neck there on the left. And anytime during the day, a member for our staff may randomly ask them to share their poem with them. This helps our students practice both their reading fluency and their oral presentation skills in a very fun way. And after reading their poem, students are given a ticket, which Ason is showing there. He's all excited about how to get it. They fill that out, they bring it into a bucket at the library, and Miss Cottley on one pulls a few names of students at the end of the day, and they get the treat of reading their poems over the P.A. system at the end of the day, which is what you see on the last picture there. So that's been a lot of fun. That concludes this week, and Poetry Month will continue through the end of the month. Speaking of reading over the P.A. system, our third graders have been given the responsibility of leading our school in the pledge of allegiance and sharing the daily announcements. Everyone's doing a terrific job, and they do really seem to swell with pride after completing their public speaking opportunities. So it's kind of been a great thing, and everyone's doing very well. And lastly, looking ahead, we have a few upcoming events that Sarah mentioned. First, we're excited to welcome our incoming kindergarten families for orientation, will be held next Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. Parents and students will be giving a brief overview of the educational program and a building procedures and a walking tour of the facility. And the real highlight is the ride on the big yellow school bus. All very looking forward to that. Next up, we do have the math, New York State Math Testing. That'll be held next Wednesday and Thursday. Our students are quite ready to show what they know. And lastly, we are excited to host our annual Arbor Day celebration, which will take place in our back courtyard next Friday, April 29th, at 10:15, in memory of longtime Word of Ed member John Finn. All of our kindergarten students will receive a tree sapling to plant at their home and with the hope that it will grow healthy and strong right alongside our kindergarten students. And I do invite you all, anyone's welcome to come and join us next Friday for that very special commemorative event. And that is all the news from the Elementary School. Thank you.
Mr. Kamar?
Hi, good evening. Public speaking one-on-one says, "Don't follow cute children or puppies." I'm going to be pretty brief this evening. E.L.A. State Testing, just a quick look back, went very seamlessly here at the middle school. Our NGH has honored society induction was April 6th for our middle school students and our recent inductees, and congratulations to all of them. The third quarter has come to an end. Those report cards will go home next week on the 28th. And just some COVID updates here. Our cafeteria, we sent out, we are just about back to normal here with our protocols with the exception of our three-feet spacing. What we felt like superintendent had a nice book, the kids having that option to be able to now sit where they want in the common areas, have that SEL component, be able to, you know, have some of that choice and sit with their friends. So that's been a welcome addition here. May 1st, we're looking at ending the temp checks at the front door. We've been continuing with that, and none of those were recommendations or requirements. They were just kind of a good practice that we kept in place. And now that things have kind of settled and moved forward. But as always, our plan is flexible, and we will continue to adjust based on what's going on recently. Straight sports are off to a great start. Currently, we have softball, baseball, track and field, and all three teams are doing a wonderful job. Our coaches and kids are out there working really hard, and despite the weather, they're still getting their contest in, which is really nice to see. Looking ahead, next week, you mentioned the math. State assessments will be happening through to eight, and that's Wednesday and Thursday. The Laker kids have their family, multifamily garage sale on Saturday, the 30th, continuing with fundraising efforts. Our open house superintendent Haddon had mentioned for the four or five will be here on May 12th. And the next nine weeks, looking at the calendar, trying not to project too far ahead, we'll save those for the next meeting. But so many great, wonderful events, and so excited with our traditional events and kind of getting back to a feeling of normalcy. I know we've talked about some of the things that went really well, with thinking like outdoor graduation. We're going to be getting into the planning phase here. More details to come with our formal for the kids on the 20th. The students and staff are real excited for the D.C. trip coming up, and it's going to be fun nine weeks as we close out here. So thank you all, have a great evening. Did you have a question, Sarah?
Nope, I just wanted to quickly share Frozen Junior was a great success. That came right after the last board meeting. The kids did an amazing job. Mr. P., Mr. Vannelli, and Mr. Compton did an outstanding job as always. Just, it's always amazing at the end of the night to realize that those were middle schoolers up there on that stage. It's phenomenal. Also, as Mrs. Connolly did announce, the Arbor Day celebration, it's not going to be as large a ceremony as last year, but we are going to do something and make sure that that is an annual thing every year for Arbor Day in memoriam of Mr. Finn. So, and then on Saturday, the 30th, as Mr. Kamar mentioned, the community yard sale. So you can buy a spot for, I think, $20, give or take. You can buy a spot, and then all the money that you earn is yours. And then we encourage families and staff to come do some shopping on the 30th as well if you're interested in that. So reach out to Mrs. Joseph or Mrs. Collins if you would like to sell any items or just show up on that day. Some items for tonight's agenda that I just wanted to review publicly prior to vote, and of course, there is opportunity for board discussion at each item, but I do like to publicly discuss some of the items ahead of time just to give the community and the board a little bit of background or things that are noteworthy. So first on the agenda tonight, we received a letter of intent to retire from Siobhan McKenna. She has been a bus driver, and I know that anyone that has worked with her or knows her is very upset by that. She's been a very dedicated driver. She's wonderful. She's a great personality. She's funny. I always find myself smiling when I talk to her. And so she turned in her intent to retire effective the end of this school year. So that is on tonight's agenda for you. Also on tonight's agenda are some proposed calendar changes. School, public schools are required to be in session for 180 school days every single year. And with that, though, we also know that we live in the north and we have snow days. So we always, we have to build in a certain number of days to make sure we don't go below the 180 that is mandatory. This year, we had 188-day schedules, which means that we were allotted eight schools to 18 snow days. We did use three. So tonight on the agenda is a proposal to give back three days. Two of the days would be used to extend Memorial Day weekend. So on Friday, May 27th, and Tuesday, May 31st, would then be off, and that would make Memorial Day weekend a five-day weekend. Also, creating a no-school day on Friday, June 24th, which would mean that the new last day of school would be Thursday, June 23rd. Monday, June 20th is already a school district closed day for June 17th. So as a part of this, we are proposing having Tuesday, June 21st, and Wednesday, June 22nd be half-days, early dismissal days for the schools. So Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday would all be half-days of school, and the last day of school would be Thursday, June 23rd. Another reason for all of this at the elementary school, as I talked about earlier, we are going to be doing the elementary school cafeteria, and the sooner that those guys can get in and start working for part or all of days, the sooner they can get started and get to that deadline of being open and ready for the first day of school in the fall. So multiple benefits, but that is on tonight's agenda for your review. Approval. Also on the agenda tonight is a transfer for the purchase of one-time items. Oftentimes, at the end of the school year, we will purchase things that weren't built into the budget but are needs identified by our staff. So tonight's agenda again includes a transfer purchase of several one-time items. The list on the slide behind me, but it includes a new kitchen range and oven for the cafeteria up here, a new maintenance vehicle with a plow, a 19-foot lift for our custodial department, as well as field striping. We're doing some field maintenance this summer, working on the elementary school library stairs outside, graphing calculators, workbenches for the tech lab, classroom rugs, easel carts, just some other small to mid-range items. So that is on tonight's agenda. That has been discussed at previous board workshops and meetings, and that is on tonight's agenda for your review. Questions about any of those before I move on? Okay. Finally, on tonight's agenda is the 2022-23 budget adoption. Assistant Superintendent Anne LaRoe is going to come up. And she is going to present, and I will chime in as well.
Thank you for the opportunity to present the budget this evening. The budget was developed over the last several months. The board has been meeting in workshops and committee meetings. We started with the development of the vision and goals for the new year, and then we incorporated how that would roll out to all the departments, leading up to tonight's final adoption of the budget in preparation for the vote. The expenditure budget was developed with the principles based on a rollover budget for the new spending plan and economizing what could be within the budget. In addition to the contractual obligations, the budget includes the following additions: laptop ceiling with replacing the line striping and the elementary school playground designs; creating a human resource benefits coordinator and consolidating portions of payroll purchasing and accounts payable positions. Is no additional staffing required for this. Full implementation of school-front human resources application that we implemented this year; establishing a part-time technology support person, either BOCs or a contractual consultant, contractual person; reinstating Odyssey of the Mind; creating a full-time position to oversee food services, and that should not initially have an impact on the general budget. We added laptop, increase in energy costs and contractual obligations. The instructions reduction is primarily due to retirements, with some reductions to BOCs services. Transportation's reductions are primarily attributed to us purchasing one bus instead of the two buses we purchased previously for this year. Community services are flat, and employer costs are primarily health insurance and contractual obligations.
So budget to budget, there is a 0% change to the budget as the combination of the increases.
With reference to revenues, we have several revenue sources: state aid, the tax levy, fund balance, reserves. We use our A.R.S. retirement reserve to offset costs and interest earnings.
All right. Did you lose video?
It's back.
Is it back? Next slide. I heard from the public. So there are people watching, and they're texting me with notes. Okay.
Proposed revenues. We have an increase in state aid. We're requesting a tax levy increase of 1.5%, and a reduction in the use of fund balance. We have an opportunity to do that because, as Superintendent Haddon said, we're holding the budget flat.
So the tax levy limit, as the board is familiar, allowed for a 3.95% increase to taxes this year. Neither the board nor the district felt comfortable with that, and we really have been working for the past several years to limit the increase. So the 1.5 reflects that. So again, we are looking at a flat tax rate of 1.5% to taxpayers. This equates to, if you look in the bottom right-hand corner, for the average Greenwood Lake household, it is $72 increase over the course of the entire year, which comes to $6 a month. The proposed budget is $27,125,655, of which $17,211,696 would come from the tax levy. The district and the board have worked, again, as I said earlier, very hard to keep the taxes down, especially during the pandemic with many families experiencing financial uncertainty. And we feel that we are doing that again this year, requesting a 1.5% rate increase, while below our limit. Next steps again would be a public hearing on the budget on May 10th, and then the community board election and budget vote day. In addition to the public hearing, District Clerk Mary DePietro has been working very hard on our school budget and school district newsletter that will be coming out within the next few weeks. So every single resident of Greenwood Lake will receive that in their mailboxes. Thank you. Are there any questions? Gotcha.
So we'll pass over that one. Audit Committee. Assembly Committee. Sue?
We finished the final section of policy book. We are waiting to be able to hit the end of the higher assembly and go switch over to the lower one. It's a huge four-year undertaking, about four years. Three? Three. It's a lot of policies. So we are done with that.
Phillies, John?
I don't have any updates. I have a portion of this to be on Monday, where everybody will be at the elementary schools. I don't know anything's brought up that should be discussed here or not. I don't believe so.
John, it seems that's ever been discussed, and we have to catch up. Patty's not here for what we're recording. I'm going to go to Chester with Sue, please.
Sure. They are meeting tonight also, so I don't know where they're at with their budget. Be interesting. And they have their senior trip coming up, and they're preparing for graduation for their seniors. Their sports are all doing well. Chester beat Monroe, boys' baseball team last night. It was a big deal. Sure, Oxford did not meet for April, and Miss Ba has been working on the budget with the C at that level and reporting that to us, so we are now quieted down. We have a budget.
Yes, and the survey you're now basically requiring.
Yes.
We're discussing that. P.T.S.A. here for P.T.S.A. Maybe P.T.S.A. Pillows of Greenwood Lake.
Irish festivals coming next month. Everybody's busy preparing and planning.
I wonder the Irish festival. Pillows of the Flow, would anybody like to discuss the board? Approve Orange, Ulster, BOCs 2022-2023 administrative budget. Can I get a motion to approve the Orange, Ulster, BOCs 2022-2023 administrative budget as presented, please? Motion. Aaron, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. For zero. Cast a vote for Orange Ulcer B O Cs Cooperative Board. Can I get a motion to cast one vote for each of the board? For William Boss, Edwin Estrada, David Eaton, to the three open seats on the Orange Ulcer B O Cs Cooperative Board as presented, please? Chris, Aaron. Second, John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. For zero. Adopt 2022-2023 School Budget. Can I get a motion to adopt the 2022-2023 School Budget as presented, please? Motion, please. Down, second. Aaron. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries for zero. Approve the first reading of Sections 8,000 to 9,000 of the new policy manual. Can I get a motion to approve the first reading of the new Greenwood Lake Uniform School District Policy Manual for the Section 8,000 to 9,000 as presented, please? Motion. Sue. Second. Aaron. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries for zero. Financial reports and marks. Can I get a motion to approve the financial reports for the March 2022 as presented at this meeting, please? Motion, John. Section two. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Approve tax report card. And motion to approve the property tax report with submission to the New York State Education Department. Motion, please. Aaron. Second, John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Approve Attorney Services Agreement for Shaw, Pearson, May, and Lambert. Can I get a motion to approve the Attorney Services Agreement for Shaw, Pearson, May, Lambert, for G L T A labor negotiation as presented, please? Motion, please. Sue. Second, John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for zero. Approve Attorney Services Agreement for Shaw, Pearson, and May and Lambert. Can I get a motion to approve the Services Agreement for Shaw, Pearson, May, and Lambert for bus drivers and monitors labor negotiations as presented, please? Motion. Sue. Second, Aaron. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Ratify 2022 to 2025 M O A district and G L T A bargaining unit. That was a big one. Motion to ratify the 2022 to 2025 memorandum of agreement between the district and the G L T A teachers bargaining unit as presented, please? Motion, please. Down. Second, Aaron. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Amend 2021 to 2022 student calendar. Can I get a motion to amend the 2021 to 2022 student calendar as presented, please? Motion, please. Sue. Second. Aaron. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Approve transfers within unit appropriations. Can I get a motion to approve transfers within the unit appropriations as presented, please? Motion, please. Aaron. Sue. Any discussion? All in favor? Close. Motion carries for zero. Approval for Avery Washington, D.C. trip and transfer of funds. Can I get a motion to approve the Washington, D.C. trip and approval of a transfer of funds as presented, please? Down. Second. Sue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Approve Orange Ulcer B O Cs Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Can I get a motion to approve the Orange Ulcer B O Cs Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for assorted supplies, milk, ice cream, bread, and technology as presented, please? Aaron. Second. Sue. Any discussion? Motion carries. Approve Consultant Agreement Medicaid Services. Can I get a motion to approve the Consultant Agreement with Management Advisory Group as presented, please? Motion, please. Sue. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Approve prevailing rate change. Bill Beach painting. Motion to approve the New York State Department of Health prevailing rate change for Bill Beach painting as presented, please? Motion, please. Aaron. Second. Any discussion? Yes, we're going to be first round again. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Approve Gustan Communications Agreement. And motion to approve the agreement with Gustan Communications to provide the transportation department with a two-way digital communication throughout the tri-state area. Can I get a motion, please? Sue. Second. John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Approve Health Services Agreement with Greenberg C S D. Can I get a motion to approve the Health Services Agreement for Greenberg C S D as presented? Motion, please. Sue. Second. Aaron. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Accept resignation with regret for McKenna. Can I get a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Eileen McKenna as bus driver and as presented, please? Aaron. Second, Sue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Approve extension of lead replacement appointment Ryan. Can I get a motion to extend the lead replacement appointment of Kara Bryan as presented, please? Motion, please. Aaron. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Point substitute teacher Aiden Bernard. And motion to appoint Denise Bernard as teacher substitute, teacher A as presented. Motion, please. Aaron. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Accept recommendations of C P S E and C P E meetings. Can I get a motion to accept the C S E, the C P S E recommendations as presented at this meeting, please? Motion. Sue. Second. John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. Enter into exec. Reasons for working the enterance in the executive session is for the employment history of particular person or persons, the matters leading to discipline of particular person or persons, a disciplinary matter involving a particular student. Can I get a motion to adjourn and go to executive session, please? Motion, please. Aaron. Second. Sue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for zero. No action will be taken at this meeting. Thank you.